Meeting number ten to order, and in honor of Police Week, we're going to open up with the Honor Guard posting of colors.
Order, on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and you may be seated.
Now, Mayor.
This time, we're going to ask the police chief to come forward, and Councilman Scott is going to read a proclamation for Police Week.
Whereas the Congress of the United States of America has designated the week of May fifteenth to be dedicated to National Police Week, and May fifteenth of each year to be Police Memorial Day, and whereas the police officers of America have worked devotedly and selflessly in behalf of the people of this nation, regardless of the peril or hazard to themselves, these officers have safeguarded the lives and property of their fellow Americans. And whereas by the enforcement of our laws, these same officers have given our country eternal freedom from the fear of violence and civil disorder that is presently affecting our nation, these men and women, by their patriotic service and their dedicated efforts, have earned the gratitude of the republic. Now therefore, we the city council, the city of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of May fifteenth through the twenty-first, 2016, to be Police Week, in recognition of the service given by the men and women who night and day stand guard in our midst to protect us through enforcement of our laws. We therefore call upon our citizens in this community to especially honor and show our service, sincere appreciation for the police officers of this city and their families for their dedication and the sacrifices they make by deed, remark, and attitude. Signed and sealed the sixteenth day of May, 2016. Shane A. McCambel, Mayor.
Sorry, it took me too long.
No, thank you. City manager, mayor, city council, thank you very much for taking the time to honor Police Week. I'm just going to say a few short words about two fallen officers at the Burlington Police Department. That's really what Police Week is all about, is remembering those that have given the ultimate sacrifice. They gave all they could possibly give, and so I appreciate it if you just take a few seconds to listen to what we have to say about these two officers, and have just a little moment of silence for them and their families, and what they gave back to the community, so, again, thank you. But Officers Freely and Officer Sauer of the Burlington Police Department took an oath swearing to uphold the Constitution of the United States. They made a commitment and dedicated their lives to act on behalf of their community. This commitment was made knowing full well that it may require the ultimate sacrifice. Today we pay special honor for the lives of Officer Freely and Sauer, and all the officers who have made this sacrifice. May God bless and protect our community, but also bless and protect all of those that wear the badge, and above all else, may God bless the United States of America. And so if we could, just take a second, a moment of silence. And again, on behalf of the Burlington Police Department, I'd like to thank you for your recognition of this. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, we're going to move right along. Kathleen, can we get the roll call, please?
Wilson?
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
McCambel?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
And for those of you that do, that want to leave, we'll give you the opportunity. You can go ahead and see your way on now, and how desperately you guys wanted to sit there and watch me all night, right? We have a couple of Mayor's Awards tonight that I'm really happy to give out. This first one, tonight is my first opportunity that I've gotten to meet her, but I've heard so much about you that I feel like I know you, and I know where your contribution has been, and it just means so much to people, so I'm really happy to present this to you tonight. Be it known that on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I'd like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian, to use your God-given talent to help someone in their most vulnerable state, and to families that are truly in need of hope, you have taken on that task, which makes Burlington a great place to live one's life. Bless you. On May sixteen, 2016, this Mayor's Award is presented to Paula Renaud, presented by Shane A. McCambel, Mayor. Paula?
Following the police was a tough act. I would like to say that one of the things I've done through retirement is volunteering in a variety of places, in the hospice, Great River Hospice House, and hospice services through our nurses and all our staff provide a tremendous resource to this community, and there's always a lot of room for volunteers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll tell you what, we definitely have a good one in you, and we're blessed to have you, and I hope we have you for years to come, and hopefully some people that'll start stepping up and want to replace you, and to start doing some of the things that you do as well. So, this next Mayor's Award, I'm also happy to give this out. This is to somebody that does so much, and does an extreme amount for me personally, and I'm just grateful for you. Be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Thank you for all that you do for so many without complaining. You helped create a stress-free zone for me, and for that, I am truly grateful. Your positive attitude, selflessness, authenticity, and your sparkle help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On May sixteen, 2016, this Mayor's Award is presented to Kathleen Sol. I got you a couple of gifts you can open up if you'd like.
Right now?
Yeah.
Oh, candle.
Yeah, because I stink.
Ooh, high hill.
Because your sparkle.
Sparkle, and a heat wrap.
Because I'm a pin in the neck.
Yeah, that's true. Thank you.
I appreciate you. Thank you so much. Can I get a picture with you? Ms. Kathleen, would you like to have a word to say, please? Thank you so much for volunteering to have a word.
Oh, thank you. Well, first, I'd like to say that normally I don't ever get a chance to speak at a city council meeting, so this is quite different for me, but I would like to thank you for the Mayor's Award, and I feel very blessed to have this job that I love, and the pleasure's been all mine, working for you, and just want to thank you for this award that I'm receiving actually on your birthday. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. And just for the record, her sister is in the house tonight, so we're glad to see sister tonight, too. All right. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item One Consent Agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have finances and miscellaneous minutes of previous meetings, payroll, city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. We have three resolutions. The first resolution approving agreement with Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad Company for the angular street sewer and depot drainage issues. The second is a resolution awarding contract for the 2016 wastewater treatment facility, S&amp;D Building, rough replacement. The third is a resolution approving the fire department fees for American Heart Association classes. We have two public hearings set for June sixth. The first is consideration of voluntary severance of territory located east of 113-112 Valley View Lane, Burlington, Iowa. The second hearing is a consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with the Art Guild of Burlington, Inc., for encroachment into right-of-way at 301 Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa. And we also have an appointment.
We have Phoebe Herrick to fill a vacancy in the low-rent housing agency.
Thank you, Phoebe, for that. Is there anybody that would like to have any items from the consent removed? Amen from the council?
Not I.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Your Honor, I have a motion to approve all listed under Item One Consent Agenda.
Second. Moved in second. Kathleen.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambel?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay. All right, this is the time set for hearing for consideration of plans and specifications for the 2016 Cascade Watershed Sewer Separation Project, Phase Two. Publication has been made in the hot guy. Ryan?
Mayor and council, this is, from the title, Phase Two of our Cascade Watershed Sewer Separation Project. This project is for the installation of storm sewer within the Cascade watershed as a part of the consent order between the city of Burlington and the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for elimination of our combined sewer overflows.
It took too long.
Turn your back.
I can't talk that fast. Okay, well, continuing technological issues from last week, this would be for the installation of some storm sewer on Barrett between Page and Garfield, some storm sewer within the Windsor Circle area, storm sewer from, where we go maybe? Fingers crossed. Just not coming out this way. Okay, there we go. Some storm sewer from Dunham and Sixteenth, running down Dunham, actually over to the northeast corner, or northwest corner of Seneca, some storm sewer on Tenth, mid-block between Parkway and, not Parkway, sorry, Park and Sunset, running north to the existing storm sewer on Sunset, southeast corner of Crescent, not Crescent, Crestview, running south tying into the Cascade Box Sewer, and then one intake being separated at Third and Concord. The plans have been available down there since last Wednesday for review. Cost estimate of the project is $507,000, and that is being funded through Cascade Sewer Bonds, which I believe were setting at 2.3 million in that budget. Some of that has been used for the first phase of MASL. So it's probably 1.7 available?
That might be about right. We also did some transfers for miscellaneous sewer rehab out of that, and we're at some point going to have to be looking, talking with Travis and bringing to the council additional borrowings. I assume that that might happen this next fall, or probably in the spring, if it doesn't happen in a fall, as we move forward with the various sewer projects that we're required to do.
But at present, we're well within available funding.
Yes.
Any questions from mayor, council?
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions from the audience? Is there anybody from the audience who has any questions? Okay. Council, are we satisfied?
Got it. Thank you, sir.
I have a motion to close.
Second.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambel?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay. All right, this is the time set for hearing for consideration of plans and specifications for the 2016 Cascade Watershed Sewer Separation Project, Phase Two.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambel?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2016 Cascade Watershed Sewer Separation Project, Phase Two.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambel?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2016 Cascade Watershed Sewer Separation Project, Phase Two.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambel?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Moving right along. This is the time set for hearing for consideration of Budget Amendment Number One for FY 2015 to 2016 Budget.
Okay, Eric's going to put up the budget amendment that was published in the paper last week. Basically, we're increasing the revenues, nine million, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and five hundred, sorry, nine point one million, and increasing expenditures, ten million, two hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and seventy. On the next sheet, Eric, it just kind of gives you a rundown of the different items in detail why we're increasing them, so I'll quickly just go through them. Intergovernmental revenues, we're going to increase road use by four hundred thousand. That's the increase in the road use tax that wasn't budgeted in this current year. The next four are targeted jobs. Those are agreements we already have in place with existing businesses, and they send us the money, and then we turn around and write the check out. So we've gotten better at budgeting it now, but still, it's sometimes unknown, so as the year goes on, we see the amount we're bringing in, so then I increase the revenues by that amount, and then you'll see down on the expenditures, they're increased by the same amount, so it's an in and an out. The other intergovernmental is the one million dollars loan payback from New Berry Village. That was income we received this fiscal year that wasn't budgeted. And then we are expected to get more local option sales tax this year, so we're increasing that by four hundred and fifty thousand. We're also increasing hotel motel by eighty thousand. I'm showing our bond proceeds from our 2016B. That's our refunding bond, so we don't have those in our regular budget, because every year we just analyze, is it worth refunding? Is it worth the percentage we're going to get back on income to refinance? So that amount I'm increasing, and then with all this wonderful activity we're having, my transfers are up, transferring money from like the money we got from New Berry Village transferred into the police capital account, transferring the extra money for loss in hotel motel, so I'm increasing the transfers also. Does anybody have any questions on the revenues? Okay. Expenditure side, we're increasing the public safety function. We've had some increase in overtime for the fire department, and then the training of four new officers and physicals, we're increasing that amount by about thirty thousand dollars, a hundred thousand for the overtime for fire. In public works function, road use, we've had some expenses come up with the traffic lights. I think we've all seen them on Roosevelt, the repairs that we've had to make, so we also ordered the new lights, the LED lights on Roosevelt, so those expenditures weren't in the budget, so we're adding them in. Even though some of the repairs are going to be reimbursed by insurance, we do need to have the expenses be accounted for. In general government, we just had a few things go through that function that wasn't budgeted, the comp study, attorney fees are up fifty thousand, and then some other professional fees. And then debt service, again, I'm putting in the bond proceeds, or that amount that we're refunding, because we'll get the proceeds in, and then we'll turn around and pay out to the escrow fund for that refunding bond.
Steph, on the attorney fees, are those combined attorney fees, local and?
Correct, and probably one of the bigger drivers, well, we have a few drivers on that, but one of them is union negotiations this last year.
And then under the culture and rec category, we're increasing it by thirty thousand for the hotel motel, the expense we'll have to pay out to CVB because of the increased revenue we're getting. And also, I took a look at the auditorium, how their revenues and expenditures are flowing, and since they are having more activity down there, I'm going to increase that by a hundred thousand dollars, so we should see the revenues also come up. Community and economic development, again, those are, we paid off some debt that we had owed the waterworks, and then we have the targeted jobs. And under capital projects, I just included the projects that are happening in this fiscal year that weren't budgeted for. One of them was, you'll see, thirty-four thousand dollars for public safety expenditures. We got grant money in, but the expenditures weren't budgeted for, so I'm increasing that. The purchase of the US Bank building, we had seven hundred thousand budgeted to do improvements on the building, so I'm just increasing that, a half a million dollars, the five hundred thousand, to get to that 1.2 million that we purchased the building to. The third, Washington Parking Ramp, for seventy thousand, that was a previously budgeted item, but it's just getting done now in this current year. We had some flood projects, mainly, I mean, we had the flood last year, and then we're finished up the dredging project in this fiscal year. And under the business type, we had a project that'll go down at the wastewater treatment plant, the DFA controls, that was budgeted in a previous year but happening now, solid waste truck for a hundred and seventy-five thousand, that was purchased in this year. And then Water Works, we're increasing their expenditure amount by four hundred thousand. That's, of course, not money out of our funds, it's just a budgetary amount, that their revenues and expenditures are in our state budget form, so.
So the bottom line is?
We're good. It's, our expenditures are not more than our revenues coming in.
Thank you very much.
Right, with the amendment.
Even, it shows a million dollar, million dollars more expenditures. Some of those are a net increase. We did pay off the one TIF bond issue.
Federal mogul.
Federal mogul, so we paid that off early with the cash that they had advanced, so we used the cash that they had paid in advance off, so we did have a, we did have a loss of cash balance in the debt service fund, but it wasn't our money, it was essentially theirs.
Right.
And she's noting here the four hundred thousand dollar increase in expenditures on the waterworks side, but she's not showing a corresponding increase in revenues. They may have a corresponding increase in revenues, but that's from a budgetary perspective. We don't, what we have, what we're concerned about with them is making sure that we've at least accounted for their expenditures, because that's a legal requirement for us. Outside of that, all we do is report their revenues and expenses. But our general fund is still going to be up this year. It looks like we should be on track to be about increasing the same amount that we had originally budgeted to go up. It'll be in different spots than we hoped it, or thought it was going to be, but it'll still end up being right about the same.
Is there anybody from the audience who has any questions or concerns on the budget? I see none. Counsel?
Thank you, Stephanie.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that this is, in all the years that I've been up here, this is probably the best explanation and best breakdown of these revenues and expenditures that we've had on a budget amendment, and it's greatly appreciated by me, but I'm sure by the public, too. It explains it, might bring up a few more questions or a few more criticisms, but it's okay. It's out there. It's what open government's about, so, thank you.
Anything else, counsel?
I have a motion to close.
Second. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambel?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Your Honor, a resolution approving budget amendment number one for fiscal year 2015-2016 budget.
Second. Moved in second. Let's vote. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambel?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
All right. This is now time set for hearing for consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Summer Street right-of-way located east of the property of 215 Summer Street, Burlington, Iowa. Publication has been made in the hot guy. Mr. Tissler?
This is, again, a request to vacate a portion of Summer Street that's located east of 215 Summer. It is a dead-end right-of-way that leads into the property owned by Walgreens. The remaining portion to the north had previously been vacated, as this just runs directly into Central Avenue. This is the only home served off of Summer Street, and they've attempted to find a way to construct a garage on their property in the past, but based on setbacks and lot layout and the ravine to their north and west, it proved difficult, so they've requested to vacate this portion in hopes to improve their property. There are no utility issues within the right-of-way, and they would maintain ownership and maintenance of the portion being vacated. This would leave a five-foot strip to the east, the city does own the property to the east, where there's a remediation building right now from some, dealing with the Circle K gas station up to the south, but this did go to the planning commission on April nineteenth, and they voted six to zero to approve vacating of the described right-of-way based on the status as a dead-end roadway that only serves 215 Summer, lack of ability for future roadway, along with desire for ownership, and lack of utilities within the right-of-way there, so this would be a 25-by-54-foot portion that would be vacated.
Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions regarding this matter? Anybody? Okay. Counsel?
I like it.
Let's move forward then.
I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambel?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have time set for hearing for consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of South Fourteenth Street right-of-way located west of the property at 1412 Hillary Avenue, Burlington, Iowa. Publication's been made in the hot guy, as prescribed by law. Mr. Tissler?
This is a portion of right-of-way just to the west of 1412 Hillary. The right-of-way for 14th Street is, I guess, irregular, going from 14th Street, south of Hillary, to 14th Street, north of Hillary. It has a jog off to the west. The property owner of 1412 has requested a portion, to vacate a portion of right-of-way in order to expand storage or garage in this area.
uh, lack of ability for future roadway, along with desire for ownership, uh, and lack of utilities within the right-of-way there. So, uh, this would be a twenty-five by fifty-four foot portion, uh, that would be vacated.
Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions regarding this matter, anybody? Counsel?
I like it.
Let's go to use the property.
Okay, let's move forward then.
I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Move to second, Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I move for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Summer Street right-of-way located east of the property of two fifteen Summer Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Second, I'd like Mr. Fleming, can we take a vote, please?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Uh, next we have time set for hearing for consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of South Fourteenth Street right-of-way located west of the property at fourteen twelve Hillary Avenue, Burlington, Iowa. Publication's been made in the hot guys prescribed by law. Mr. Tissler?
This is a portion of right-of-way, uh, just to the west of, uh, fourteen twelve Hillary. The right-of-way for Fourteenth Street is, uh, I guess, irregular, uh, going from Fourteenth Street, uh, south of Hillary to Fourteenth Street, north of Hillary, uh, it has a jog off to the west. Uh, the property owner of fourteen twelve has, uh, requested a portion, to vacate a portion of right-of-way in order to expand, um, storage or garage in this area. Uh, the twelve feet is based on the existing utilities within the right-of-way, keeping, uh, all the right-of-ways within the, or all the utilities within the right-of-way, so the portion that, uh, would be vacated, the twelve feet would not contain any utilities. Um, so there are no issues with that under the twelve-foot portion. Uh, this did go to the planning commission on April nineteenth again, and they voted zero to six to approve recommended vacating of the right-of-way, not based on utilities, but based on the status of the existing fence and structures, uh, located on the property. Felt it was, um, I guess, somewhat putting the cart before the horse on, in their point of view that, uh, we're vacating to correct an issue, which, um, some also feel is a positive on that end. So, that's why they voted zero to six, they didn't have any concerns about utilities in, under this area, 'cause there are none. It was just based on the fact that there was, uh, structure within this portion being requested to be vacated, so... If this was not vacated, any existing structures would be required to be, be removed from the right-of-way and located on private property. But this twelve-foot in width would keep the existing utilities within the right-of-way. This is one that staff did recommend approval, but planning commission, again, based on what was mentioned, uh, did not recommend approval.
Hey, is there anyone from the audience that has any, uh, concerns on this matter?
I own the property at fourteen twelve, I was just curious on if I was on get it.
Can I have you, uh, come to the podium, please? Just state your name and your address and...
Glenn Nelson at fourteen twelve Hillary. I just wanted to put up a twenty-four by twenty-four foot garage, I've been trying to buy the property for ten years.
Been trying to buy the property for ten years?
Yeah, I've been maintaining it since ninety-eight, that vacated property, I've been maintaining it since then, since my wife and I moved in there.
How long has the shed and the fence been there?
Uh, since, probably ninety, ninety-nine.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And nobody's ever said in one way or another, I couldn't have it there, or...
Yeah.
And it's far enough off the road to where people couldn't bother it, so...
Yeah.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Does, does, does anybody, do you guys have any other questions for Glenn?
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel?
This is one time I've gotta go against the planning commission. I, I don't normally do that, but I, I just don't see why we can't do this.
I don't either, I mean...
I agree, there's, it's, it's land that's not being used, it's land that's gonna be added to the tax base, and he's gonna put a property up there, or add to his, the value of his property. I think it's a, it's a huge win for the city, and a, and a win for him, so...
Yeah, after ten years of maintenance, already.
I can see where they're coming from, as far as saying no, but I don't see any reason why we should deny him this.
I'm gonna admit a real recent mistake, all right? Everybody makes it.
That's right.
He, he put that building up there innocently, it sounds like it, I, I guessed it last week, it sounds like it today. I had a tree removed on my property, and one that was removed, and it was on the city right-of-way, it was one of the ash trees. And they removed it, they dropped it on the sidewalk, and they broke some panels. I've worked with the Parks Department and, and all, and he brought me out, all the information I needed to, to get this taken care of. Well, I got it on Friday, I tore the sidewalk out on Saturday before I got my permit today. And I, I, I got a tongue-lashing by someone at Public Works for doing that. It was innocent, I, 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 uh, if I thought about it, I probably knew better, but, um, it happens even to those that have some knowledge of what's going on with the city ordinances. Okay, you know, I, I, I can forgive Glenn for, uh, for what he done in nineteen ninety-nine, as I'm sure it was innocent as could be, so...
I agree.
All right, Glenn, it sounds like you've been forgiven, let's take it to vote.
I need someone to close the hearing.
I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Let's close it first, how about that? Can I get a second? All right, Kathleen.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Your honor, I move to preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of South Fourteenth Street right-of-way located west of the property of fourteen twelve Hillary Avenue, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Move to second, Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
All right. It worked out for you, everything's good to go.
But still, still two more readings, we have two more readings.
Two more readings, but it worked out good for you tonight, you're good to go.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving loan agreement authorizing issuance of one million two hundred ninety-five thousand general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series two thousand sixteen A, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same.
Second.
This is, uh, based off of projects that were in our, uh, capital improvement plan, uh, expected to be funded with GO bonds. We've gone through multiple steps along this process, uh, to allow us to, uh, issue bonds. Uh, this is the final step, uh, they've been, they've gone out for sale, we've gotten pricing back. Uh, this authorizes the entering official, officially with the loan agreement on, uh, one point two nine five million, uh, to be paid through twenty twenty-nine. Uh, within the, uh, resolution is the repayment schedule and interest rate for each of the bond series, uh, associated with this. And the projects that are funded by this, just as a reminder, a purchase of a new ambulance, uh, parking lot resurfacing that, which will be used towards both, uh, third, Third and Washington, or no? Third and Washington? And then Sixth and Washington parking lots. Um, Mount Pleasant Street, which is a combined project with the city of West Burlington, using, uh, M, the, I wanna say MPO funds, but what is the funding source, Mayor Proton?
It's the, uh, he did ask me that.
Tap?
Tap, tap.
Yes.
Yeah.
Off the top of my head, or just?
And other miscellaneous street projects that we have budgeted for another close to six hundred thousand dollars. I think that's it, if you have any other questions.
Any questions from the audience? I see none. Counsel, are we good?
We're good.
We're good.
Okay, Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving loan agreement authorizing issuance of two million one hundred eighty thousand general obligation refunding bonds, series two thousand sixteen B, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same.
Second.
This is, uh, similar structure as what the other issue was, this is for a refunding of a bond issue. Uh, the original bond was done in two thousand seven, uh, with payments scheduled through, uh, tw- two thousand twenty-two. This, uh, refinancing will keep the same repayment schedule of principal, but it'll lower interest rate, with savings of just over a hundred thousand dollars, uh, by doing the refinancing.
Sweet. You don't have anything you wanna add to that?
Unless you want me to.
Savings of a hundred thousand says enough for me. Anyone from the audience with any questions or concerns? I see none, counsel? Everybody's happy we're saving money?
Yeah, absolutely.
Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving audit services for fiscal years two thousand sixteen through twenty twenty with Anderson, Larkin, and Co., P C.
Second.
Okay, um, this is our annual financial audit. We went out to an RFP in April, and the RFPs were returned to May, and the audit committee met, um, last week to look at the bids, um, we do the quotes. Um, we did it on a three-year basis with an optional two years, so the resolution will just approve the five years. If, and if something comes up, we can change it and go back out for RFP if we need to. Um, Anderson, Larkin, and Company was the lowest bid. Um, they also, um, do the city of Atumwa, which is a comparable-sized city to us, and they issue a G, a GFoa report for them too, which is the type of report that we do, and we've been certified and get that award every year. So, I feel comfortable going with them, they've bought, that, you know, audited a com, a city similar report that we want to keep completing every year, so... Does anybody have any questions?
No, I seem to have plenty of experience and, uh, I was satisfied with it. Is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns? I see none.
Thank you, Steph.
Okay.
Counsel, satisfied?
Yes.
Good savings.
Good savings, okay, well done, Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
All right, good deal.
Round of a resolution approving the final plat of Burlington Crossing subdivision.
Yay!
Second, 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 second.
Thank you.
Third.
I'm so happy.
This is, uh, seven lot subdivision of the former manor site, um, located between Agency Market, Roosevelt, and Columbus Drive. Currently, it's platted as seven lots with two outlots, uh, for stormwater detention in the southeast corner and near the southwest corner. Uh, and then, uh, Lot B or Lot A, I believe, Legacy Drive would, should become a public street connecting Agency Street down to Market Street. There may be further subdivision down the road of some of the lots, uh, this was based on some of their current, uh, demand for, uh, property sale. But as, uh, more tenants come forward, they may, uh, re-subdivide or move some other property lines, uh, based on the needs of, uh, tenants that move into, uh, this property. So, uh, two lots on Agency, a large lot, uh, along Columbus, and four lots on Roosevelt currently. Uh, this is previously approved, uh, through the preliminary plat process, uh, by the planning commission and city council. Does include an improvement agreement, since the roadway and infrastructure is not currently all installed and accepted by the city. Uh, they do have an, an improvement gr, agreement with a letter of credit on file with, uh, Two Rivers Bank and Trust for that cost. Um, so that's a, an attachment to the resolution as well. If you have any questions on anything.
Does that show a road coming off of Columbus and meeting up with?
There's a, a private drive easement connecting Columbus to Legacy Drive, uh, this would be a, a private drive, uh, maintained by the developer or owner of the property. But that would, that would get them over to a lighted intersection at Columbus, it would be a stop sign on, at Legacy lining up with the Kmart interests, but, uh, the stoplight currently is on Columbus Drive.
Any questions from the audience? Okay, councils, you guys satisfied?
Oh, boy.
I drove, I drove out there today, they're, uh, already going right to town on it, there's trees coming down, they're cutting the grass apart, taking out concrete, really moving right along.
He's loving that one.
Very anxious to, anxious to get it going, and good to see it happen after all these years, thank you, Lord.
Okay, uh, let's take it to vote, Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Your honor, a resolution approving agreement with the police facility design group, PA, for the Burlington Police Facility renovation.
Second.
Chief? I can't get used to seeing you in the suit, man, you know? Well, you only have to do it for a couple of weeks, I promise you. But no, Mayor and City Council, it's just more good news, this is the architect that we selected to move forward with the project. It really started clear back in two thousand and nine with Wilson Estes, it's the same exact company, nothing's changed. They're changing some branding things they're doing in Kansas City, but James Estes has been a, a true partner in this process, and it has provided tons and tons of hours that we were never charged for. I mean, he designs police facilities, that's what he does, he's designed beautiful facilities here in Iowa. We have the utmost confidence in what he's gonna do, and the document that we presented to you at the work session is a very standard document. It is, like I said, been time-tested, it's what the, it's an industry standard that all the architects, construction managers, contractors go by that document. And the most important thing in the document, all, a, anything and everything you see in there is always decided by the owner, and that's us, so... I mean, they're here to walk alongside of us and make sure this project is what it is, and, and, and I know as a police chief and several other chiefs that I've talked to across the state have the utmost confidence in, in this company and Mr. Estes himself, so... I mean, I'm really confident that this is the way to go.
I liked the presentation too, I liked the way they, they explained how they were going to, uh, take us, you know, be open all the way through the process. Uh, I'm, I'm personally, uh, tickled over the deal, so I'm, I'm really, uh, I'm really excited. Before, before I turn you guys over, is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns? Okay, none?
Thank you, Jim.
Counsel?
Jim, what's the budget, where's the money coming from?
This is, uh, will be part of the overall project costs for the police facility. We have an overall budget of, I hate that you've asked me this now, I think it's in the five point four million dollar range, something like that. Um, we've already transferred a good chunk of those dollars, uh, into an account for the police facility. We had seven hundred thousand that was borrowed, uh, initially a year and a half ago, or just over, I guess, a year ago to do the rehab of the existing facility, a million dollars that we had from the, what Stephanie mentioned earlier from the sale of the Newberry Village. Um, we've transferred a significant amount of money, if you looked at those transfers that were between funds, part of that was from local option sales tax to the general fund, and then from the general fund to the police department facility, about a million dollars, uh, that we're using from a combination general fund and local option sales tax, primarily local option sales tax. And then we'll have two point two million that we'll be covering through a bond issue that was, that we had the election cycle last fall, uh, an up to four million dollar amount that we committed to only using two point two million of. The fee, the compensation is listed in this contract, it's in Article eleven of the contract, they have a base fee, uh, three hundred and seventeen thousand, I think that's about eight percent of anticipated project costs. Um, there are additional potential structures that would be in there, uh, depending on if there are some variances that were done. I, uh, just, some of that's, as things come up in a project, some of it is, I think he even has one listed there, the additional costs if you were to do, for example, the firing range. And then there's a, one in there for a parking roof structure, which I think that's one that is an option that we would like to be able to do if we can.
Not the range?
The range is beyond what our budget is gonna be able to allow. Um, and then there's just, as other things come up, they have their hourly costs in there that are associated with it. This agreement is set up, uh, specifically, it's, uh, to be done in tandem with a construction manager agency, um, which is something that we're looking to do over the course of the next couple of meetings. And I know that's more than what you asked, but, and then...
All right. Very good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counsel, we're good?
Very good.
Uh, Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Yes, good meeting. Hey, uh, at this time, we're going to entertain comments from the audience. If there is anybody here, uh, that has a comment, uh, or a concern, uh, this is your opportunity to address it now. Superintendent?
Good evening.
Good?
I'm Freddie Starling, five seventeen South Summer Street, Burlington, Iowa, and I just have some, I just have some questions, uh, concern. It's about the Gladys White and Deeben White Park. And, uh, the first one is concerning that water fountain down there. That's the first question. I understand last year, that was supposed to be a, a fountain ordered for down there. You know, I know anything about that?
Eric?
I don't, I don't know that one was ordered, I'd have to check with Ryan on the status on that. I know we've had vandalism on it in the past, and that, that was the reason it wasn't replaced in the past, so, I, I'll have to check on that.
So was there a, was there a new fountain that was ordered, or was it the hand, I thought it was the, that they took the handle off or something like? Am I thinking of something else?
Well, I was told that there was a... Well, I was told that there was a fountain ordered and the price. So I don't know, the city manager might know something.
Again, Eric has said you'd have to check with Ryan on that.
All right, that was the first one. So okay. Because I'm still on this water fountain. They said it would be in this year. That was what I was told, so. Okay. The second one is about that electricity down there. When you hook up three cookers, you don't have no power. And I've questioned about that and they said, well, we can't upgrade the power or something. Anybody know anything about that?
I think that is we have some places that are designed to have multiple cookers. That is not one of the facilities that's designed that way. And I it's been a year since we've talked about this, but I know when this came up, I guess when we came came up last year, that's.
Yeah, Ryan Ryan and I were down there a couple of weeks ago and he's gonna talk to Braden on what the options are for that, knowing the event that is coming up there. So I'll follow up with him on that as well. But yeah, there are limitations on what can be done there just based on what services go into the park.
On on the on the water, just just as you don't remember off the top of your head if it was just, I mean, even if you ordered a new water fountain or whatever, but wasn't it just, I thought that there was the the handle or something that was taken off or that was missing? Am I thinking of something else?
You're thinking of the the fountain, I think, in front of Memorial Forum, where they stole the brass fittings?
No, I mean, I have no idea what they're doing, but I was thinking it was Gladys White Park.
Well, he last year
I need to I need to go down here.
They gave me the key. They gave me the key for the fountain because I even hate to talk about this because the whole thing was talking about, hey, how are we gonna be able to wash our hands, pass the inspection and all of that, and we don't have no water down there? Will you bring your water? No, 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 I'm not bringing no water. I mean, I pay taxes and others pay taxes. I would say load it load those trucks or load the city trucks up and bring the the containers down there so people can wash their hands or whatever. You don't have no drinking water and all. Well, I would say the rest of them. And the reason why I'm saying this is every vendor has to pay 33 dollars. For what? You don't you don't you don't have proper proper water? You don't have proper electricity? There are several of, well, not several, but there were others couldn't set up their 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 food vendors last year. You know, I mean, that doesn't make sense. One day out of a year, Juneteenth, and it doesn't happen down at Steamboat Days. You know, it's not, someone that's in authority should be taking care of these things. That's what I'm saying. That's my opinion. And I think I'm right. It's been now it's been a whole year and it's still the same thing. You hook up three cookers, the electric electricity, the break is break. And then yet whoever have a vendor, a purchase table, whatever, you're gonna have to pay 33 dollars. For what? I said, no, I wasn't paying last year. I wasn't paying. No, just and you're you're turning people away. People are being turned away. I doubt if you have a handful of people this year. I just doubt it. Others others last year said they weren't coming back. You know, one day out of a year, we can't have things indecent and in order. I don't know who's responsible for it. That's all I'm saying. That that regardless, that electricity should be where you could have proper power down, even if you have to cut some back or whatever, it should have proper power down at least for that one day. You know, proclamation of emancipation proclamation and we still in bondage? I know I'm right. Because I was told that there was a fountain and exactly how much the fountain cost would be down there this year.
I want to make sure.
You know, I listen to everything else going all about the money, all the I'm not I'm I'm interested in this concerning Gladys White and Dearborn White Park. That's my purpose for being down here tonight. Otherwise, you wouldn't be bothering me. And the third. Sanders White, Sanders White Park, Creeple Park, Perkins Park. All of them have shelters. That's the only ones sitting out there don't have a shelter. And you can't tell me it's not the room. There's plenty of room to put up a shelter. The one at Perkins Park, I don't know why it was torn down. Can anybody answer that for me and put up another one in the same place? But yet you leave yet whoever is in is responsible leave the Gladys Whites and Dearborn White Parks sitting there.
I don't know the deal. I don't know the answer on that one. I do know some stuff that does happen out to the park. Sometimes groups come together and fundraise. So it could have been one of those deals. As far as the I wanna I do want to address the, I don't know what the deal is with the utilities. I don't know what's up with that. And I, you know, I remember vaguely speaking about it and it being compared to other parks and and saying that they were pretty much similar. But I agree with you. For that one day, we should be able to figure out something so that everybody has utilities. And for that one day, I we need to make sure that everybody that that the water thing, well, not just for one day, but we need to make sure that the water is working. So I totally agree with you on that. I'm not sure what the what the deal is. I don't know. I didn't know that they ordered a new fountain. I was thinking it was just the spigot that was broken, but I'm Mr. Teslin, he'll he will look into it and he will definitely address that. As far as the power, I don't I don't know what the I thought I talked to maybe maybe it was Braden, but I thought the answer for the power was that they would have to do something just special for that day because the the other parks that were equivalent to that had the same setup that they didn't have any power. That was that was what I thought. Or that that was all the the power that they had. Am I wrong on that?
I'm not. I'd have to talk to Braden on it as well, yeah.
Well, you know, we we about what, four weeks from now, you know, boy, you know.
No, I'll I'll ask some questions tomorrow if you can hold me to the fire but and 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 check down with me, but I'll find out what what Braden has to say about the electricity, but I don't know what else to I don't know. I mean, unless somebody else has got an answer, I don't know what else is.
It's the same. It's the same. It's the same about there. Can you tell me what was wrong with the shelter house over there at Perkins Park? They tore it down and put another one up. And yet Gladys White Park is still sitting there bare. You know, it's a part of the city. It's a part of the city like the rest of it, you know.
The park money, we don't have the money that we used to have for the parks to spend, so I know that's that's part of the reason.
Yeah, but I mean, why why would you whoever tore it down and then put another one up? That's all I'm saying.
At at Creeple Park?
No.
Perkins Park.
Perkins Park. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
It was deteriorated and bad condition and that was a regular rental shelter, so that was replaced there because that was a rental that occurred on an annual basis.
It was not in it was not in a safe condition and the roof was leaking.
Okay.
We made a decision to to replace it.
Okay, well, if I'm if I'm if I'm wrong, correct me. Is that it wasn't there some money came in last year for the parks?
We have money every year for parks. The council, though, does a budget process every year. If the council would like to see an addition of a shelter at another park, that can be done, but you have to then prioritize that over other projects, which is fine. But the council would need to make a decision on that. This is not the only park that does not have a shelter. We have multiple parks that do not have shelters. When we when the decision was made on this lot, when I think that decision was actually made probably about the time I got here, maybe a little before, but you're replacing a park shelter that was already there. We don't have enough funds to we're we're struggling to make sure that we have enough funds to to maintain what we do have. An example would be you're trying to you want to get the lake down there cleaned up. What's that?
Lake Starker.
And how much how expensive is that?
Couple hundred thousand.
Have you been able to get it budgeted?
No.
We can't keep up with the existing infrastructure. So as you start looking at talking about adding a new facility, it's we're we're struggling to make sure make sure that we maintain the ones that we do. But you can talk about this as you go forward with your with your capital plans if you'd like to see an upgrade done that which is being which is what's being requested here.
I think you I I understand all of that. You know, I'm still, you know, I I still don't quite understand it, you know. We can come up with money for everything else and I've been down here before. It's not the first time.
That's that's not that's not true, true, Pastor. The the Little Leagues came to us begging for for money several years ago and and they needed new lighting and they needed some some field improvements and that sort of thing. And and we weren't able able to accommodate them. And they went out and raised the money themselves and got the job done themselves. And that's a lot of times that's what happens is they 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 come asking us to to take care of a concern and there just isn't enough money to go around. So so they they take it upon themselves to to see that it gets done or or we partner with them and and we're able to come up with a portion of it. If we could sit down and talk rather than than come before the entire council and make and accuse us of of not caring about portions of the community and 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 I mean, I've known you long enough. You could pick up the phone and say, Tim, come and see me. I got a problem. And and I would come to bat for you and do everything I could, just like I would any other citizen in this community. Instead of instead of coming before council and and making us trying to make us look like bad guys or whatever.
I'm not making you look like no bad guy.
I mean, that's 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 not what we're up here for. We're we're we want to make the community what you want.
I hear exactly what you're saying, and I'm not here to debate or this or that. I just came to ask some questions. I came to give my comments. And I came to ask you some questions. I asked if this could be put on the agenda and they said, well, just come on down to the council meeting. That's what I'm doing. And 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 all I'm all I'm saying is just if you look at it, I understand. If you look at it, you'll see for yourself. I mean, go go down and and take a look and look at the other parks. How we come up with the money? I mean, I understand about the Little League. I mean, we are paying, we are paying a 33 dollars. For what? What are we paying for? I mean, that's happening somewhere. It's happening in the in the in the city or the or the state somewhere. When we go down to the health department and 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 get that permit, that's happening. It's going somewhere.
Everybody's got to pay that.
Everybody everybody's got to pay that. That's that's the expense of of the public safety that they provide through through the health department.
I hear what you're saying, but I'm just saying that's it's not like I'm coming here begging for something free.
No, I agree with you.
I mean, this is only one day. I'm talking about one day. To me, this one day ought to be wiped off. It shouldn't be in the first place. Because it wouldn't have been. I'm gonna leave it alone. But anyway. And I'm not here to try to embarrass nobody. I'm going by some of the things that I was told. And I just come to 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 clear it up. I just come to find out why, why it isn't. You know? You know, as far as as calling, I mean, I try to do things in in a in a proper way. I try to present myself in a proper way. But hey, I mean, I'm busy just like everybody else. There are things that I want to other people be asking me. I said, I don't know. Then you start speculating. Then you start to, you know, want to accuse and this or that. Well, where's the money going? Where's this going? You know? And you know it yourself. There has been a a lot of money have gone through here. I mean, I I don't even want to go back on all this lawyer stuff. Then then I started getting, you know, I I don't want to I don't want to I don't want to I don't want to be like that. I just I just come to say what I had to say. And when you're in a position, there are certain things you're just gonna have to take as leaders. And I'm not helping accusing you. I was asking who's responsible for that. And then Brother O'Hill said somebody else is, you know? So I know don't don't put it out that I accused you. I'm asking. I come asking questions. And then you 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 did say, well, we'll get your answer on this and get your answer on this. And I this was what I was interested in. I would like to see as 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 a I know I'm not the only taxpayer. I realize that. You know, but I just said the park sitting down there like that, I I just felt they should have a a shelter house like like other parks. I mean, there are people be down there and they be sitting on the hot sun. You know, and use for basically this one day Juneteenth. And it would have been all fair. We wouldn't have ever had Juneteenth in the first place. I understand about all the other groups, but I'm talking about this one day and for the purpose of this one day.
As far as the shelter house, I that one, I I can't I can't see having the money for the shelter house right now for one day, but for water and utilities? I'm all in. I I think you need to we need to make sure that you got everything that everything that is needed for that day. You shouldn't have to worry about water. You shouldn't have to worry about power. As far as the the shelter house, I just want everybody to know where I stand on that. I don't I don't think we've got the extra money for that as of right now. I mean, to me, that would be the way back on my list.
I agree with you. You know, if it is just for one day, maybe the city could afford to have someone come in like the Sherwood Company or something and put up a tent like they do for wedding receptions and all. Just an idea, just throwing that out.
Well, all I'm saying, this this could be a future plan. I just say something that I would like to see. Maybe nobody else wants to want to see it now. You know, that's all I'm saying.
Well, for future plans, I'll agree with you there. I would love to see.
That's all I'm saying.
I would love to see that in the future.
And like I say, another thing is, you know, we pay out money and we don't get the service. I'm not accusing nobody. I just said we pay out money and don't get the service.
The you the public health fee? That goes to the the county? That's that's not a service. That's not a payment to the city, though.
Okay, but I'm saying.
But so so saying that you're paying it and you're not getting a service, that's a different topic. I mean, you I understand you're you're asking for 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 services down there, but that's not a payment that's for this.
Okay, yeah, I understand that. But what I'm saying is you should be looking out after us as taxpayers from Burlington. The county is is a little bit different. I understand on the 33 dollars, but hey, we're I'm still bringing it back here. I'm bringing it back to whoever, you know, presenting to whoever. I mean, we're losing we're losing people that don't want to come and and have new vendors.
Can.
All because this one day, all because it's not properly had a proper service that we need down there. So who's responsible for that?
Could we be certain that by the end of the week that the staff gets with Freddie Starling and finds out whether or not these things can be provided for them and if they're going to be provided, when they're going to be provided? And that that gives him three weeks to get to make alternative plans if he if it can't be provided?
I'd like to talk to people tomorrow. I wanna I'd like to have it all figured out and squashed honestly tomorrow. Who 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 do I need to talk to? Braden?
Well, yeah, I'll talk to Braden on power and talk to Ryan on the water.
Let me say that. It's not, you know, it's it's for whoever will. It's not just for whoever desire to use a park. So I'm just a one voter. I'm just one person, one taxpayer. So I don't know about a whole lot of other people, but this is the way that I feel. And I think I'm bringing it to the right people. And I when I say the 33 dollars, well, then I think that whoever the city should be looking out after us. We're gonna have to pay the 33 dollars if it don't if doesn't go to the the city of Burlington yet. You should probably be representing us. I thought. Maybe I'm wrong.
You're not wrong. We represent the we represent the taxpayers.
Well, right then, that's why that's why I'm coming here to you. I'm paying the 33 dollars, which is going to what, to the state?
We're gonna get you some answers tomorrow. We're we're gonna get you answers tomorrow.
See, that's why I hate to come down here. You know, you see what I'm saying? Because there are things should I I don't need to be down here. Other things should be already taken.
Let me say let me say this, though, Superintendent. Let me say this, though. I just want to say you you gotta give us a little cut us a little slack. Wintertime is just getting over with and and we just get we're just getting into to the summertime stuff, so. So.
I understand, but see, things build up over a period of time. You have many other people feel the same way I feel, but they won't come down here. They want to be friends. They want to I don't have no friends. You know, so a big deal if I have to, you know, I'm just gonna be straightforward. I'm gonna be straightforward, plain. If I if I'm out of order, you can tell me to sit down. I'll sit down. I'll take orders. If I, if I'm out of order, you can tell me to sit down, I'll sit down, I'll take orders. But when I'm right, you know, I've been down here before and got turned away. And, you know, I, I feel like now, you know, at my age, I, you know, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak my, I'm gonna speak what's in my heart, and I'm gonna strive to do it in a decent and a respectful way.
I just, I just want you to know, again, uh, I, I know how things add up and all of that. All I'm saying is, as far as the, as far as the park and getting ready, we're just, we're just getting over, we're just getting past winter time, and there's a whole lot of, a whole lot of things that still need to be addressed, getting ready for summer that we haven't, so, it's not, it's not that stuff is getting done and Gladys White Park is getting overlooked, I just want you to know that. And, uh, tomorrow, we'll, we'll get it squared away to make sure that you guys have everything that you need, so that that day's, uh, so that day's a success. I don't, I don't see why there'd be any problem.
Alright.
Nobody's got anything, nothing else to say? Anybody else from the audience?
My name is Jose Gunder, I'm nine oh five South 10th Street here in Burlington. It's my first, second time being down here. I was here last year, and I was one of the vendors. And I distinctly heard, what, this young man here, tell us that they had a fountain, three thousand dollar fountain, that would be placed in the park by this year. That's the only reason I'm down here tonight, because we lost money last, last year. Because the, the, what was it, the, uh, inspector wanted us to shut down after we didn't cook, and we didn't have no place to keep it warm. So we had to go and, and, and rent some, uh, what was it, uh?
Generators?
Generators. We had to rent generators, come out of our pockets and rent generators for that event. In my church, the Holy Spirit down there, you, you know me, uh, Mayor, uh, we, we lost over a hundred and some dollars because we had to throw the food away. Cause he told us that if we couldn't keep it warm, we had to shut down. And if we didn't have any water to wash our hands, we had to shut down. So we went and got gloves, didn't do no good, because he said we still had to shut down. Now, I don't know if this came from the city, but it was from the health department.
It's, it's health department, that's, that's anywhere.
And then, and then, then they told us about the thirty-three dollars. Well, you just out of luck on that. And, I mean, thirty-three dollars is not a lot of money, but it's my money. You understand what I'm saying? Now, that's the reason I asked the question, and I came with Pastor Starling, because we as pastors, you know, uh, uh, Mayor, we, we wanna do this thing right. We don't wanna, I'm not down here to cause any problem, we're not down here to argue, we're not down here to accuse anybody. All we asking for is something fair for us that one day. That's all. And I think that we, we, by coming to you, our, our city council that's supposed to be speaking for us, I think is the, we don't have anybody else to go to. Last time we was told to go to Des Moines County. Are we not in Des Moines County?
That's for the public health, that's for, for having the food license? We're, we don't have anything to do with food license.
No, no, tell me about the license, I'm saying, we were told if we got a problem, go to Des Moines County. So where is Des Moines County?
That was in, that was in reference to the fee.
That's in reference to the food license.
Okay.
That thirty-three dollar fee, that's, we, we've got no control over that.
But, but if you have an issue with this from, I'd encourage you, Eric, Eric's department, he's here in City Hall on first floor. If you wanna come in during the day, uh, or give him a ca-, a call to his office, and you have a question about the, like, the water, or whatever, uh, he doesn't necessarily keep up on all of this, the stuff that's going on out there, to know what, where things are. But if you give a call during the course of the year between, from last year to this year, you can get it back onto his radar screen, so he can be thinking about it, and try to get it, make sure that it's addressed. And if it, if he's not sure where it is in the process, he can find out. He's in a bad spot to try to figure out where things are tonight.
We, we, uh, we run him into the ground, we got him spread pretty thin, but Mr. Teslin, he will take care of you.
Okay.
He will take care of you.
And, uh, that question you was asking about the, uh, that water fountain? The water fountain works, but up, up under there, there's a little spigot. And that spigot has to have a key to be turned on. You know what I'm talking about? It fits over and it turns it on.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about, that's what I was thinking about.
We, we tried to get that last year, and when we, it took them, I'd say about two or three hours before they even brought it to us. Yeah, and he gave it to Pastor Starling, and then we tried to return it to him, and it took us about a week to get it back to him. So I don't know what was going on with that. But that little thing that you're talking about up under there, that's the only thing we have to wash our hands with. And this, and this fountain is about this tall. It doesn't have anything where the water runs into.
I'm gonna go take a look at the park tomorrow.
It just runs on the ground. When you, when you put, press it to drink water, it just runs on the ground. So, we went, I looked at the other, the other, the other, uh, fountains, all of them had like a round bowl, where the water's draining into something. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, sir.
When he said thirty-three dollars, because you didn't, we had people to come out of, uh, from, from Illinois, and I weren't aware of it, but I guess it was in the letter. I think it was in the letter, but I, I just, uh, I might've overlooked it. But anyway, that would've been thirty-three dollars, plus another thirty-three dollars, because you didn't get the permit in time, or the day before, or something of that nature. You see, all this just, you know, that's why I say, it, it, it builds up and builds up, and it makes, start making you, you know, bitter, you know?
That, that, those fees aren't the city's, though.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just saying.
I understand you can be bitter about, about that, but it's not at the city.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm just saying, you have other people that come in, that they don't even know about it. You see what I'm saying? And you're gonna charge them sixty-six dollars? I, I mean, it's just, you see, it's confusing on this day when people trying to enjoy themselves, and other people just took their stuff and went on back, and it just, you know, it's, 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 it's hurting the, the celebration, you know? And somebody's responsible.
Let me, uh, let me be about two minutes. Alice Parks, three oh two South Garfield. I listened to all this back and forth. I think some, been some time about, since you looked at graphic, a picture from Hawkeye, wasn't it? Do you remember that?
I, I'm not sure.
In the state of Mississippi, since we don't wanna do it here, we go to Mississippi. A lot of things that we ain't doing, and we send, we sending results of it in the children, in that generation that's around us, and behind us. We're seeing it. They're shooting, they're cussing, they're cussing, they're fighting, they're killing, they're doing everything they can. I barely can sleep up there on, up on, where I live at, right there on the Garfield and Division. Speeding and speeding and speeding, riding on the bumper. So, it, it's, it's coming up, it's gonna be a tragic thing happening here in this town. I think we need to get on, so much for that. But, I've been here ever since night, about forty, forty-seven years. And I, I like my city, I like Burlington. It's, it's, a whole lot can happen here, and you can make it, be a part of making it happen, but I like it. But, about the same issue, we got a state, like state of California, Oakland, California, has got a, is a, got a, got a better system, I think, in the state of Mississippi than we have. And what they do, the council is, sends in a resume, I mean, people that want to be on council have put, turns in a resume, and turns it in, in, into it, and the mayor, and his cabinet, what they do is look at it, and the person's the best qualification, gets the job. You see? That's where you're getting experience, people, and you're, and you're looking at the credentials for putting them there. Burlington do have a great school system. All four of them, all, all the, three of my girls, these men, they graduated out of, out of it. But I would say, is that, if we pass back to them, it, it, it's gonna become a part of their life until they go to the grave. And the thing about it is, is that forty-six years ago, I don't see anything, all I see is hashing and running, running, you know, running these kids from here to here, or there, or there, and coming up with nothing, and they're rebelling against that. They're rebelling against that, that's what they're doing. I remember Mayor Shane McCamal, his mother, his mother kept him in line, I mean, she walked, she walked and done everything to keep that, that household together. What are we doing in this city government for young people? Look at South Hill. Look at it. We're gonna sit right here on our, on, well, I can't see that, on, 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 on our bottom, and let this, let this, I don't know who the guy is, tear that school down, that's a new school almost. The good thing to do is, you need to have a meeting, you need to come together, you need, you need to talk about it. What are we going to do with South Hill School up there on Maple Street? That could be named Maple Street Community Center. We could rebuild that South Hill up here, and stop, and, and get, and stop all this wah, 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 I hear a bunch of wah, wah, wah. But the thing about it is, is that we could do that, something constructive. What y'all say about that? I think we can come up with some good ideas. And bring it in, and see, and might, just might, the good Lord might spare, and we might live long enough to find, to see the results of what we invested in young people. All of us here have been a teenager or something at one time, or have you forgotten who you used to be? See a old lady walking, walking to the store with some groceries in her hand, when you was young, and you go over there and, and ask, "Can you help across the street?" Well, we need to do something, because, I'll tell you, it is bad, you can't hardly, it's twelve o'clock. Well, five, six in the morning. It's a little rough. Twelve o'clock, getting ready, going, going, noon, noon, get something to eat, maybe down at the hamburger place. You can't, I can't hardly get out of my driveway. Running like a bunch of wild animals, like, like a deer, like them deers, in the morning, go, go take the kids, and deers be up there running, running, running across the street, that's about what's happening now. But I believe that making investment, and if you, and, and I used to not get in the proper investment, the use of the investment that we are making. Take company, almost, almost two thousand dollars a year for a doggone house, for taxes. And all get a breath, breath, breath of air, not even fresh air, but just air. And that's what we getting tonight, that's what he's experiencing. Is that he getting, he getting a breath of air, but it's not fresh air. It's polluted. Someone holding on to something, they just don't wanna turn loose. Can I use people? Use that auditorium down there? Yeah, I'm hearing about saying that.
You can, you can use the auditorium? It's gonna cost you a fee, but you can use it.
Yeah, but the fee's something, something like the one they got when they had the, the, the Wild Bull thing down there. The Wild Bull can get it, they, they were gonna shut it down, and get, get, tell them to take it, you could get it somewhere else, and when they found out that the money's gonna cost to do it, they come back home. I'm saying, that school system, that building, setting up the, go over there and drive by it, and look what you got in your community. Sometimes you need to drive around in it, 'cause I told you, if you don't, you get, you get, you become dumb about it. I could become dumb about, about it, and ask, "Oh, Reverend Spoh, have you seen him out there? Out there by a, by a seer?" I said, "What's out there?" He said, "They got a barbecue place out there." So I finally stayed on, stayed on the phone, talking to an individual, and they guided me out there. When I got out there, I couldn't hardly find a parking place, people running over top of one another, trying to get some of that good barbecue. See what I'm saying? Don't sit and tell me that the city cannot do this, and the city cannot do this. Who's paying this? Me. My tax dollars. You got the money. That's all the people saying. And they saying, in so many ways, we'll work with you. And I believe that you start working with these people, most of them sitting around here arguing with them. And I couldn't, and I couldn't handle that down the case. You come in, and come in, you come in my office, you come in there for a purpose, and the purpose has been talked about and dictated to. We come out with an answer, and that's what we do. You go do your job, you can't do it, I put you out there on ninety-nine. So, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
What I would do is, you know, call your little meeting, sometimes people hate meetings, and they run from meetings, but meeting can be very incentive, you wish, wish you probably done it when you get about seventy-some years old. And meet with them, go to the schoolhouse, get with the coroner over to the schoolhouse, tell them the problems in the city. This, this city council and city people working here, my God, can't you, you know, you call these people together, and y'all come together? It would be humongous what hap-, what happened here. That's stretching your dollar bills, that's stretching, it don't, that, this, it, this thing he would've showed a while ago? My God. I just sat there and looked at it. What do your school system have? Talk to the coroner, anybody in here talk to the coroner lately about, uh, improving the work ethic and things here with our children? How can we do that and expand into their territory, that they, when they get ready to go get a job or something? They don't have to walk in there with their head down, "I have a jo-, I need a job." You see what I'm saying?
There's, there's a lot of programs, there's a lot of programs that, that.
Let me tell you something about the building I just got to do, that's what I'm getting to. I'm trying to find a way to get a grant. And I know if, if, when y'all hear this, somebody's gonna talk about it, and the roadblocks gonna go up everywhere. But I said, let them know, build your roadblock, be like Donald Trump, Trump, get your wall. You know what I mean? But this is not gonna, this is what, what is happening is that I am so glad that I put my kids in, in high school. And I'm sure you probably glad you got to there, because you're making more money than I ever made. The thing is, what you fear about the youth, get with coin, come on. And today, we need to start working together, coming together, the city and the school system. Need to come together, that's your children, you know, some of them have to be your grandchildren. My parents are so gr-, so proud of their education here in Burlington High School. They call their daddy every day at nine o'clock, and ain't none of them in town. One's in Dallas, and then, up in Aurora. But then she says, she want another job. "Dad, I think I found me another job." I said, "Whoa, whoa, 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 whoa." "How much is it? How much they paying you?" "Nine-eight thousand dollars a year." You hear what I said? That comes from Burlington High School. But we need to do something. I think you guys need to work with, get with coin, work with coin, and si-, and make a contribution to something, or do something to, to, to aggravate these kids' minds and things. Look, when they look up at the city council, and they say, "That, that, oh, I know him, I know her," they believe, you know, see what I mean? But this stuff running up and down here, and then you got to run out to the park, and get to the park, and go run them out of the park, and just forget about that. But let's really come up with something to hustle, let this town know that you work with that city council, I mean, the, the school, and get something done positive for everybody in here. Those teenagers, it's a bad thing, y'all know you gotta be reading the paper, when you're looking at it, finding out one man shot himself, turned around, shot the wife, and the kid. Somebody had to be raising these kids, and we can be a great help. You can be a great help if you're involved in the school system, together, and work with it. Everything, I think they're getting more out of it. God bless you.
Thank you.
Have a good time. Don't call me, I'll call you.
And you, and you too, sir.
Anybody else from the audience? Mr. Fisher, closing remarks? Kathleen, any closing remarks? Councilwoman Wilson.
None, thank you.
Councilman Scott.
Yes, I threaten this, I'm gonna do it. Today's the mayor's birthday.
I forgot.
And we're gonna hopefully all join in the chorus of happy birthday.
No, let's definitely not.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday dear Mayor. Happy birthday to you.
And many more.
Great for you, but anyways, thank you.
Why are you so red, man?
I don't know.
Thirty-eight.
No, a black person could do that, but...
They're not quite ready for Broadway performers.
Not quite ready.
Forty-seven, according to Facebook.
That's right, you know, if it's on Facebook, it's the truth, right? I just want to say, I want to say Burlington is blessed, we do have a new restaurant and I want to say thank you, give a big shout out to the musics, Jeremy and Katie, for making the investment, for bringing Billy Sims to Burlington, it was a great time and I cannot tell a fib, I ate there three times and I have not had my fill yet. Also, I want to, I want to say thank you to, there's a lady named Lynette and she's, she's one of the sewers, they have a different name that she uses, but she's one of the sewers. And she's supposed to be watching tonight because they want to bring the sewers to Burlington. So, so I just want to say that we're, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get going on that, I'm gonna get working on that as soon as possible to see if we can get the sewers here. Also want to say thank you to the Burlington School System, who am I leaving out? Thank you to Ms. Burlington for coming down and for being such a support with, every time she's asked upon, she shows up, signing autographs and she even came down to see me for my birthday and brought me Reese's Peanut Butter Cup. So I do want to say thank you so much, Ms. Burlington, you're a sweet heart and we certainly appreciate you and I encourage you, encouraging you as you run for Miss Iowa in three weeks. And there was one other person that I was supposed to say something about and I I can't remember, so I'll...
Next Monday.
Next Monday.
What is this?
And this is the, this is the award that we, that the city of Burlington won. It is the 2015 Big Muddy Cup and it's the top metro area on the Mississippi River Corporate Facility Investments per capita. And we were presented this and it was, it was quite the prestigious award and there were so many other communities that were so jealous of us. So those of you that say we don't have anything going, I'll tell you what, we're moving, we're moving, we're definitely moving in the right direction and proud to have this award here. Sussman, are you trying to get...
No, 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 keep, keep being, just keep doing your thing.
Just keep doing...
Check it out, yeah.
But that, but that award, I just want to say, let them turn over, that award came from a lot of hard work, came from a lot of hard decisions, a lot of councilmen sweat, councilwomen sweat and worry and stress and the chamber and just, it was just a collaboration of people working in concert together and all that hard work and this is what we get. But anyways, just exciting time.
But better than that, we get new jobs and we get higher payrolls.
You betcha, you betcha. Mayor Protim, yes, sir?
I do want to compliment Brad and the Parks Department. Yeah, Brad Selby for how they conducted the bridge run on Saturday, that was very well done. Even the city manager came through big time, I guess.
Twenty-fourth place.
He beat Eric.
And Eric, Eric was nice enough to pace him and block the wind for him. And so that was nice of you.
The windbreaker.
Councilman Fleming and I had a good time, we found our calling, I think, handing out bananas.
He handed out four hundred and eighty-six bananas and they were all nice, quality ones.
Anyway, we had fun.
Yeah.
Even though the temperature wasn't quite right.
Okay.
I just shared that with you, so I'm ready to adjourn whenever the mayor tells me I can.
City manager.
I don't owe anyone a meal, so I got to walk across the finish line, I was so far ahead of Eric.
I think it was one second.
One second.
Are you willing to get away with that?
No, I don't have anything.
Nothing else?
What?
No, I don't...
Chief, did you hear that? He has nothing.
It's a positive night.
It's a positive night, everybody go easy on the chief, he's just getting over back surgery, take it easy on him. Again, Stephanie, thank you, you did a fantastic job while Jim was gone last week. As a matter of fact, I didn't even mess him with you being here. That Ben said, can we get to Jim?
I move that we adjourn at this time.
We don't have a meeting next month, correct?
That's right, that's right. Kathleen.
That's right.
Wilson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCamell.
Aye.
Scott. Scott?
This means adjourn, good night, thank you, everybody.